The Somerville Board of Justice Meeting for September twentieth, twenty twenty-three will come to order. Yes, that you sign us all phones. This is with our systems here. This is, uh, open public meetings law. The zoning board meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meeting law. The meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three was published in Courier-News, placed on the board's website. Notice of this meeting is also placed on the bulletin board at Borough Hall with the complete agenda. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public. And a member thinks this meeting being held without proper notice, please state so now. If not, roll call.
Chairman Adair. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. O'Neil. Mr. Widditsky.
Here.
Mr. Flores. Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Someone make motion to excuse those. All favor. Please rise, receive the plaque. This is announcement, the, uh, application for eleven forty-one Fifth Street has been moved. It's gonna be heard. Was it up here? On November first.
Yeah, we'll renotice.
Yes, we're gonna, they're gonna have to renotice. Alright, resolutions. Resolution twenty-two dash zero one nine Z. Make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Any questions? I need to accuse. Not probably, not probably. Those eligible to vote are those who voted on the application in favor of it, so that would be fine.
Mr. Abbott.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
Ms. Widditsky.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
And the other, uh, one on the agenda for this evening, um, just, uh, we're gonna take as a draft, when we work it.
Yeah. If the board's okay with that, put some more detail on it, that because it's a complex subject, make sure we get that thing through the court.
If any of the board have any questions on that resolution.
We heard some comments from the.
I think we have to improve the minutes, or did I miss that?
Uh, you're right. I didn't do that.
Alright, just.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, need a motion to, uh, approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, any additions, corrections? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Please carry. And the applications. Lanius application, uh, twenty-three dash zero one one Z, on twelve East of Terrace.
Number four, uh, my name is Eric Ferns, I'm the law group, I represent the applicant, um, Jeffrey Martinez with the present. Do you want to write, um, if I'm injured or anything?
Eric, gossip.
Okay. Um, we're here today, uh, seeking a, uh, variance application, uh, my client wishes to, among other things, uh, expand the driveway, um, to, and, uh, make a concrete driveway. Uh, it's currently, uh, flat, plus a concrete, like, uh, plus a, uh, concrete patio, concrete patio, I'm sorry. So, um, we seek a, uh, relief from the various, um.
The improvement coverage and the width of the driveway, because of the two variances.
Yes.
Two C variances, correct?
Yeah, two C variances. Yes.
I do believe these over four or five percent improvement coverage. And the twenty percent rule would be sixteen for driveway width. And I think you're asking for twenty, I think it's twelve and eight. I think the existing was twelve, and I think the extension was eight feet tapering down. So it'd be a twenty-foot width, whereas sixteen would be allowed in the zone, which is twenty, the twenty percent of eighty feet, sixteen. So that's the two variances I'm aware of.
That's, that's correct. Um, so, uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, I go into it, what, um, how long have you been at the, the address, Paul Lisa?
About a.
How long has he been?
Sir, please stand, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Jeffrey Martinez, I'm at R.C.I.N.Z.
Oh, you're a very good counselor, you're with us.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Martinez, that's the thing, uh, how long have you been at the address, twelve East of Terrace?
A little bit.
And before that?
I was living at twelve Spirit Street. How long? Eleven and a half years.
So you've been a resident of Somerville for twelve and a half years, is what I'm.
Yep.
Um, now, the, uh, twelve East of Terrace, can you just describe the current setup of the driveway?
The current set of, of the original driveway was a single car driveway where two cars, they would go in front of each other. So, you know, we wanted to expand it so we could put our cars at the top of the driveway. Uh, because over time, I'll have limited mobility, because I am handicap, so I have a big truck, because I ignore these, so. Uh, so I have to, you know, I pull that, so I don't want to park on the street, because our, the way the street curves, to park out car every day on the street, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be a sore thumb, and I work in New York City, so I can do most of the time. I only actually drive in the park all this week, so, you know, keep it out of the way on the driveway, that was really planned, and then, you know, nothing there.
And the, uh, describe the, you said it curves, try to curvature on the.
So like, the way the front of my house is, on the curb, it curves pretty, you know, curves, you see on the plan? So if I was to park on the street, then I'd park in front of, uh, between the neighbor on the corner's house and my house, and then that obstructs kind of my neighbor, Elio's driveway, when he's backing out of his car, so like, you know, trying to just keep my car off the street for the most part. My wife, like, five foot six, she can't really drive a truck either, so.
And, um, so you said you needed the, uh, how, and what kind of car are you driving?
A pickup truck.
So it's, you'd say it'd be difficult to, it's difficult to fit the car in as it is, constructed?
Or were you, like, on the street?
No.
In the driveway, I was, uh, to shut the twenty-five hundred, so like, you know, uh, with my schedule, you really result in my wife having to move it. And she's, she's this little girl that, she actually has to sit on the booster seat to drive my truck, so like, it becomes a challenge all the time, so, you know. My board can set the top of the stairs, I don't know.
Uh, the, the, um, going through this report, uh, the driveway is currently gravel, is that, is that here? Um, and it's private shape, but it's the curve that, um, proposed.
It's gonna be wide at the top and taper back down to the original curve.
So you're not looking to expand it, uh, the old?
No.
Um, so, now, candidly, you had started to improve before you made the, uh.
Yeah, I'm sure saying.
So, just to describe to the board what, what's been done already?
So the patio in the back's been done, and the sidewalk, and the sidewalk on the sidewalks, the concrete's been done.
Um, alright, and there's, there was also, um, in the report, and in this report, this, uh, issue regarding the PVC pipe orange pipe.
On the other side of the house, yeah, so when we bought the house, we had two very large trees on either side of the house, actually thirty-foot branches. Uh, when they came to rip the tree out, they broke, I guess, the pipe in four places, so, you know, by the time I started trying to go to fix it, you know, looking like another, and basically placed most of it. Uh, it was an existing pipe, uh, and then when they did the concrete work, they didn't place that section of sidewalk, because when the previous person did it, there was like a little concrete ramp that I was, you know, it was an.
So you plan to put piping in?
On the other side. Yeah, so I, I certainly, you know, this has been an education process, actually, I've been meeting with Michael. Uh, he educated me on like, you know, the way you wanna always look at projects and see if a piece of land's higher than something else, so like, you know, uh, my neighbor on the corner actually raised possible runoff concerns, so to address some of those concerns, you know, I decided to add the drainage pipe into the plan where my, my drainage would run to the street, so that she wouldn't have possible runoff from my property.
Catching drainage from the roof?
Yeah, from my roof.
So what's the situation with the drainage, uh, how?
It's just, it's a backyard.
There's no proposed, uh, shrubage or trees or whatnot at all?
Over, over time, I've been planting, replacing every shrub on the property, uh, so I've done a lot so far this year, but until like, this section's done, then next year over time, you know, I was actually probably not able to start planting a similar treatment, just for the record, you know, uh, my old house, it was on ten Spirit Street, and we had a little area where it was beautiful, uh, we'd been a little tree to drive past to visit it. And it's really flourishing, we were actually talking about putting another one, but, you know, for like six, seven hundred bucks, so it's, it takes time and budgeting to get there, so. Uh, big fan of gardening, and even so far in a few months, it was in front of my house, I replaced every bush in front of the house and actually expanded the plant.
But do you plan to, rather than a one-to-one replace, add anything?
Oh, of course, oh, yeah, we got it, we got a number of planting, the backyard, I put a bunch of shrubs, like a little section where you have the forest, woods of bushes, and like, a couple of rose bushes, and in the front, I basically extended it from the corner of the house to stop, that went along with the property line, with a couple more bushes, just.
Um, and, um, it doesn't say this, what, if, if need be, if there were any damage to set the sidewalk or anything?
Of course.
If you prepare.
So, I'm mostly new, so like, that's how things have just started, like, just like, getting tired of the muddy yard, you know, the mud and not, you know, when we bought the house, the yard was overgrown, so we had to cut down a lot, drought last year, so the grass was completely dead, so, yeah, I've been really looking to improve it as much as possible. And I'll make it, because my, I have three kids, so it's a neighborhood hangout, all the kids can literally wind up at my house, and I'm trying to corral them into the yard, so added the fence, which we had, you know, we recently did, and, you know, just trying to keep them in the yard and have a fun place.
That's a future extra helpers, too.
Well, yeah, exactly.
My father used to say that.
Now, we may or may not hear from someone of your neighbors tonight, does anyone of your neighbors raise?
Yeah, my neighbor on the corner, so I got, after I got the report, Sunday night, I went over to her house, and, um, I, I showed her the report, I made sure, I pointed to, uh, the drainage that we were adding because of concerns that, uh, she, she raised, so, uh, yeah, so we had a conversation Sunday evening.
Open to the board, if they have questions?
Talk about the accessory structures.
Sure. So, um, there's, besides the installation of the concrete, there's the shed that was?
Yeah, the shed.
What kind, what kind of shed is?
One of those like, uh, what is it, the right kind, I think, the Home Depot plastic sheds, real small. Uh, not looking to put like a big wooden structure, just like, I, I work in insurance, so I wanted to fill in the holes into the shed, uh, so that's where the whole shed went.
Okay. And, um, where in, in the, your yard as well?
In the, uh, like, the face of my house, left-hand side of that corner.
Is that, obviously, it's, it's not a permanent installation, could this, or is it?
I mean, the last thirty years, I'm doing.
No, I mean, as far as movability, are you able to, or is it, once it's installed, it's installed for, for a while?
Probably a slider on the yard, I think, you know, because when it's empty, it's just plastic.
It's shown in the north, the northeast corner of the property. And labeled as item one on the map.
Thank you. Yeah.
Actually, it did bring larger.
Yeah, you might want to set that up, also.
If I could use that, I don't know.
Yeah, sure, yeah, go right ahead.
Also, I think the applicant is proposing to take out a gravel area out, which is shown as number two on the map, which is on the southern side of the house, that, that's offset some of the improvement concrete. That whole fifty, uh, fifty-by-ten area, which I was, is gonna be removed and grassed, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna break up all the gravel, move it to make a base for the shed, uh, and then plant grass on the side of there.
Counselor, that's a, that's just a enlarged copy of the.
Yes, it's not after we were. It hasn't changed or modified, it's the same.
Since it was filed, you don't have to, you don't have to mark it as.
Perfect, thank you.
So the shed, patio?
Sorry.
Does, uh, the patio area, is that due to?
Yeah, so we, uh, we actually added a sliding glass door off my living room that didn't previously exist. And basically just wanted a nice patio, set up a permanent, uh, you know, canopy to sit under. Gone through so many canopies, I figured, let me invest in a decent canopy for once, and just not fade out everywhere.
Like canopy metal roof?
Yeah, like these Costco ones, you know, the ones that are concerned Costco, that's, those thing, thing like that.
Obviously, you're familiar with your surrounding neighbors, what are their structures like, or what, how does it compare?
So the neighbor, like, not, not Arlene on the corner, but the, uh, who lived on the wall of the house, like, their tougher just pretty much. They have very tight, uh, everything else is pretty much the same. And, uh, and the driveway, Doc, that I'm looking to do is, if you drive down East of Terrace, it's very similar to all my neighbors, what they have done over time. I just try to, you know, mindfully refer to all the property on some of the parallels I have in this project.
Do you have any, can you use the verbal here?
Um, he described that the PVC pipe that I saw on the southern side, you say that's existing, and that ties into?
The sump.
The sump pump, okay, so you're gonna have the sump pump on the street, proposing another four-inch PVC pipe to catch the roof leaders.
Uh, yeah, yeah, just from the one side of the house.
On the north side, they come out, on the north side of the driveway, and potentially pick up maybe a yard drain to pick up any, since the pipe's going in.
Correct, yeah, there's concerns of any of the potential puddle, puddling, like, you know, that's, that's a fair thing, I would consider doing that, print train or something, you know, to extend it, so it's reasonable offense.
Gotcha.
More than reasonable.
And the only waiver he's asking for, that the site doesn't have any street trees, but it has overhead lawn, wires, so if the board should request street trees, there's gonna have to be a little canopy because of the over utility waters.
Does the council have a problem with that? Where's the street?
That's a good question, but I think he's right, I think he's higher than the street. I think he has grade, there's not spots, but, um, I think he's higher. So do I think the pipe can work? Yeah, I think it can work, but it's not spot great, uh, Mr. Chairman, so it's tough. We try to get the water to the street, but always to, so, to stop any adverse impacts on joint properties with a curb face discharge. Typically, you do on a lot of residential lots, to try, if there, obviously, it's a catch basin, the tide is a catch basin, in this case, it's not a catch basin there, so a curb face discharge that runs, there's catch.
Yes, we're.
Right. Nothing further in time, so.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question. You had said, Mr. Martinez, that you kind of jumped the gun and began doing some work?
Yeah.
My, my question, I'm finding, trying to figure out how, if, how did you do the, how did you not, did you not think you needed permits?
So, yeah, to be honest, I, I, I'm from Elizabeth, so.
Yeah, but you lived here eleven, eleven and a half years.
And I haven't done any work, so like, we, uh, when we first bought the house, we actually got homes last year, and we were, and, you know, the people were so booked up, they couldn't get to us, and even my, uh, my, my, my scale, and the, they had to come draw the lines on the property, like, that didn't happen for like eight months after we bought the property, so like, you know, I took a new job, I was traveling, to be honest with you. I was more of a yes guy to my wife, and not really listening to the details, so when, um, new, 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 new owner, the paving company came, called her, you know, I was in Boston for the week, and I just said, yeah, write them a check, and not realizing that like, they expected us to handle all the permitting, and that all this permitting was required. Uh, so like, you know, the driveway is something that kind of evolved while we were getting the patio, and then that's when we were, you know, basically stopped, and I went through this whole education process, so, you know, you do need a permit to put patio in, or concrete sidewalk, or even expand your driveway.
I think it's interesting, I'll, I'll just make the comment, from my point of view, you threw your wife under the bus.
I'll see if she was here.
I mean, it, it just kind of, as, you know, whether you lived in, and I know other towns have different regulations, but it just really strikes me, you've been here eleven and a half years, I mean, perhaps no one you ever lived next door to got permits for anything, I mean, I find it a little.
That, that's the thing, so like, uh, when I lived on Spirit Street, the summer I sold, actually, one or two of the neighbors got their driveways done, and the guy came around door to door asking, and like, almost all the neighbors, except for us, because we were selling, got their driveways done, and they were basically all done the same day, so like, that's why, you know, uh.
Did you ever get a permit for anything?
Yeah, so my sliding.
Water heater?
Yeah, my sliding glass door, I got a permit where it's, it's almost closed out, they just did electrical work. Uh, my fence that I just put in, uh, when we first bought the house last summer, we upgraded the electrical panel, so we got a permit for the electrical panel. Uh, so, you know, I've, I've been trying to like, make sure, do the right thing, get permits, and I have a tracker here doing it, even Spirit Street, we upgraded our panel there, and got a permit. Uh, I think when we first bought that house, we had an electric power heater replaced, and, you know, we did the right thing.
So I think it's fair to say, when you say you have real permits, permits to, rather, you know, for an expansion, in an expansion, is that accurate? Expand, well, expand on your property, like the, from, for concrete?
Yeah, no, no.
But you, but you understand permit, part, you know, property?
Yeah, yeah, actually, when this, when the first stages going on, we were actually in the, in the House of City Hall for the, uh, permit to the sliding glass door. And, you know, because like John kept going back and forth, and, you know, uh, you know, new to this, I was drawing, doing the drawings, keeping my drawings, so drawing still process, we were actually filing for the permit for the sliding glass door.
How, how did you become aware that you needed permits, the permits you're requesting tonight, or the variances you're requesting?
Oh, John Ucic gave me this.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other board have any questions? Any member of the public have any questions, or the test money, just give it. Stand up, state your name and your address.
I'm Dr. Grand O'Brady from Nine Lee Way in Somerville. I have a permission to approach. Approach.
Yes, still have.
I wanted to give you some information.
Push it in there.
Are you appearing in your capacity as a Goryline member or as a resident?
I'm appearing as a resident of Somerville on Nine Lee Way, and I received a letter from attorney saying that this hearing will be halted tonight because I was in the.
You were the two hundred feet?
Uh, the property.
Thank you.
Just, I, I need to make that straight, sir.
That's fine.
Record has to.
Uh, I don't have a copy, I don't know.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I think we have one for you, too. Thank you.
Before you speak, Dr. Brady, you have any questions for the applicant, before you speak?
I, I guess the only question I have is, this, so, this extension of the driveway, uh, he alleges it would be used for another vehicle. Would that also be used for an RV? Because I know this, there was an RV parked in the, uh, property, uh, sometimes this summer, that's all.
Do you guys want me to address that? So, I have a diesel truck, because I do own a travel trailer, I park it at Bonds Self-Storage in Whitehouse Station. Uh, now, when we're going on camping trips, we go three a year, I bring it a few days home before the camping trip, you know, so to bring all our stuff in. And then post camping trip, basically, we keep it there, we empty it, clean it, do laundry, and then I bring it back to Bonds, typically, no more than ever, it's usually there. And it's maximum, like, for church, I'll tie a Hershey down the store and then lift doors, you, you're doing.
The other thing, I do oppose the application, um, so I'm pretty.
At this point?
At this point, just questions, not much.
So when, um, yeah, when we close it, then everybody's.
I gave everyone a copy of the, of some information. Uh, does number, uh, does item A, illustration A, accurately repres, accurately represent what the coverage was in the back in twenty twenty-three as opposed to what the coverage is now in yellow?
It's not the scale.
It's not the scale, but does it accurately represent where the coverage has been increased?
Let me also ask, I just want to authenticate, you prepared these materials and took the pictures?
That is correct, sir.
Very good, thank you, sir.
With no help from anyone else.
No, no, that's.
It's not probably obvious.
You know the, you know, you know the, you know the score in terms of authenticating that itself, that's what I'm asking you to do.
Um, my second question, I guess, would be related to the amount of coverage that now exists, and how does that impact your neighbors? Have you been told there's been any additional water coming in from your property, or electrically coming into your property after rain?
Uh, so Arlene, who lives next to me, uh, Marvin, who was with her, they'd come to me and said that they had some additional water. I did notice they got their gutters replaced recently, and we had a couple of rainstorms last week. I didn't notice where they had advised it was puddling, I didn't notice continued puddling yet. So I didn't, and also, like, what I did was, I made sure my downspout was pointing directly down my driveway, and not facing anywhere there, there, and on Sunday, I think Marvin told me that he, it helps, that I addressed it, his concern.
Martinez, you don't, uh, currently, your, your gutters aren't going to the street, you're just talking about here, so you're gonna upgrade it, take it to the streets, that's gonna help you.
You mentioned that you would put additional drainage, um, on that northern part of your property. Uh, would that be done by you, or would you have to have someone come and actually install it? Would be thorough and speculative?
Well, it would be part of the final progress, so when the company comes back to do the driveway and the drainage, and they'd have to do drainage first, and then when they come, you know, they would do it all.
So then that would be part of the agreement, should the, as all you would grant approval?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what's required, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty flexible on that, that's, you know, it's, what have we got, it's probably eight or ten.
You have to obtain all necessary permits, uh, we don't, my, uh, in my experience, we have done too many developer agreements, but we do require you to have all the permitting taken care of, and then everything has to be subject to inspection either by Mr. Cole, our building or construction departments, and, uh, you know, and any other burden personnel, not obtain their approvals. It's, uh, that's customary. I think there's a little bit of additional concern because of the fact that, however any burden may have been, apparently some work went on without any sanction or permit, calling, so the, the board is rightfully concerned, and, uh, and that concern is certainly within its, uh, within its jurisdiction. That doesn't mean we're gonna approve it or not, that's up to the board, but if the board were inclined to approve it, that you would, you would be held to a, I would say, a pretty strict standard.
I may ask another question. In illustration D, it shows, and it was not done with, on the scale, obviously, it does kind of illustrate where the present driveway is and where the expansion would be. Without criticizing my artwork, I would appreciate you telling me, how close to your neighbor's property will the expansion of the driveway be?
People over seven feet, according to the plan, at the top. And then, like, yours has like a big block, but it's gonna taper down, that's where there's no driving.
So it actually gets further and further towards the bottom.
Yes, I provided you with illustration D, which shows the, uh, how the property would look with the, uh, assuming that gravel surface is the surface that would be over paint, is that correct?
It's, it's a little wider than what the final project would ultimately be. It would actually make more line up with the sidewalk at the top of the driveway, which is hard to see in the picture.
You indicated that the property was designed as a single driveway with a single car garage. Aesthetically, does that fit in, does your expansion fit in with the other properties in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I think most of, I would say, you drive down the tethers, a number of the properties have the same type of style of driveway, wider at the top and it kind of goes down to the bottom.
But with a single car garage or a.
Correct. There, there's a number of examples where there's single car garages. I believe, uh, House Cross for me is a single car garage that has a lot of, uh.
You mean the top, you mean the entrance, correct?
That would mean, and then walk out of the garage.
The garage.
Okay, top, that's, that's the house, okay. All right, so I want to make sure we all understand the term, you know, the, uh, discussion here. You're not expecting the apron.
No, no.
Thank you.
You guys have any, public have any questions with the applicant?
I, I, I have a cane, but I.
We can hear you. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Marvin Goldberg. I'm with Arlene Margolis, who lives at sixteen Lee Way, next door. We are, uh, concerned with the water coming into our back door. We have a five level house, back door comes right into the house, not in the basement, we don't have a basement. And a week, uh, since things have changed, we have more water pooling in the back, like our doorway. That's our big concern.
And where does your property sit? Where Mr. Martinez's property is behind it? Where, where is your property?
Next door.
Next door?
Yeah, on the corner. I, I have a picture of.
So I, I think we look at the goal map provided is north of my client's property.
Asking if he puts footings in for the, for the shed. Asking if he put, did he, did he put the shed footings? Asking if he put footings in for the shed.
So we, we had about a half inch of rain and the water was very close to our doorway. Much higher than it was the previous year. So some of it is due to, I think, what's someone on next door.
What that area is exhibit? I can get that. Yeah. I'm gonna call the materials provided by, uh, the, this brand, uh. Dr. Granville, I'm gonna provide, I'm gonna call those G1 and these materials, actually, I'm gonna call them O1, I'm sorry. And, uh, his materials be O1 through O3. And these materials that we're receiving now will be O4, O5, and O6.
And so that's your backyard, correct?
That's our side, yes.
Backyard.
Yeah, it looks to me that his property, when you go back to the original map that Mr. Martinez provided us, I think their property is towards the north in the corner. So he has the pipe shown going between, it looks to me that the question that Dr. Granville asked is, was the distance between the, the extension of the driveway and the property line. On the map, it appears to be eight feet. So it, that's the area where he's proposing a four inch PVC pipe. It comes down in terms, it picks up basically the rear of the property. So if he ties in all the roof leaders, that should be more than the equivalent of what the concrete pads are, of the roof of the structure. And I, I think that's the idea is if you can tie all the roof leaders in, there'll be less runoff than what's existing today. If he was to put a drain in the yard.
Yeah.
You could do a, well, if there's a problem with the adjoining property, you can do a yard drain right off of the driveway with extension as intention runoff, or put a trench drain in, um, on this type of application. You can get yard drains at Home Depot. I'm not talking for street, but the, the concern seems to be there's some runoff happening here that it being supposedly caused by the additional, you know, concrete. So if we can remove the curvews, go into the street, in theory, we should be able to bring it back to post pre the slabs being there. So not adversely impacting neighbors as long as we got that rainwater to the street.
Uh, a lot of the water that comes from our new neighbor, and by the way, these are good people. Their kids are great and they work very hard and we like them. But the, the water that comes to our door, a lot of it comes from the rear of their house. It's very soggy there. Sayarville's got a lot of swamp lands. And this is a good example. Somewhere below the surface of the ground, I believe, is, is water. So we get a lot of water from there. And if it was okay, we would get a little water prior to the concrete. Little bit of water in the back, but nothing by the doorway. But now we're getting water, it's coming from the back of their house, right toward our door on a diagonal, kind of sort of picture. And, and just a half inch of rain puts the water about that close to the bottom of our door. Like from there to there.
Just arguing that, you know, this topic, because you don't really have a question forum. So we'll let you speak again when we close up the application. If you'd like a subation, okay?
For what?
With, you're only really supposed to be asking questions right now.
Okay.
So we'll let you speak again.
Well, so I'll put it as a question.
What you do about it?
That was good, Marvin.
You got it, very good.
I don't want to explain what we're gonna do about that again.
Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant, what we're saying here is all the roof leaders are gonna be tied in so that discharge is not coming from the backyard.
Yeah.
Tied in and run to the street. And then to put some yard drains in to catch the runoff on the pads, the concrete pads which are there, were recently poured, to get that water to drain to the yard drains, so that goes to the street. So by doing that, there should be a net decrease in runoff from the applicant's property onto the adjoining property. Therefore, it should be made whole.
If it comes from the back of the, of their house, I think it would work good.
Yeah, I mean.
Is there a pitch from the backyard to the road?
That's a good question. I bought, there's no grades on the plan, so that was a concern mine, and I don't know. I can say the driveway has a pitch.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a pitch there. You're saying when you get to the backyard, as it goes down, can you get the water out is the question.
There's a pitch along the entire side of their house is higher, I would say maybe two or three feet higher than our property at the door. Or sale up on the hill. And next to them, the house is even up higher.
Yeah.
But we're at the bottom.
Any other questions of the applicant? So just stand up, state your name and your address.
Sure, Scott Schweitzer, Eighty Lee Way, and I live behind the Martinis's and to the side of Arlene and Marvin. I just had a question on the shed, which I wasn't aware of. The driveway stuff is on, on the back, so that doesn't impact me. But I'm curious about the shed, is that gonna be real close to my garage? Is that gonna be on some type of concrete slab or?
No, gravel.
Okay.
Just gravel, it'd be like five feet from the property line in both corners. It'd be on a gravel base.
Okay.
Footing?
Thank you.
What, footings, footings? Are there footings?
Footings.
Are there footings? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions with the applicant? Yes, no show?
Uh, yes, uh, so we thank the board for their consideration. Uh, I believe that through the testimony of Mr. Martinez, it showed that, um, at least for the expansion of the driveway, um, Mr. Martinez has testified that he, uh, he has some difficulty parking on the street, uh, given the curvature and also given his, uh, his handicap status, uh, that it would be, um, beneficial and, you know, candidly, potentially future, um, residents, uh, to park, uh, in the driveway rather than have it, um, shut out. And also wouldn't disturb the, you know, the neighbors. If he did park a larger vehicle on the street or versus the driveway. I think, uh, the uniqueness of the, uh, the curvature affects the property more than his neighbors, according to his testimony. Uh, I think he's also addressed, um, concerns or he will address concerns, uh, regarding the runoff. Uh, he's proactive and he wants to put in the piping. Certainly, obviously, that's a concern for his neighbors. He's testified that he met with them, discussed this. I, I will address, obviously, he did kind of go ahead with this without thinking. Obviously, as a, as a land attorney, I would turn to me first. Uh, we could have saved him a, you know, a little more time, made this a little smoother. Um, but I don't think that, um, what he's, what he's done so far, proposing would be, you know, a great detriment, um, to, to the neighborhood at all. And again, I thank the board for this consideration.
Will it speak?
Uh, yes, so, uh, if we're, if, if, if the board has, uh, if the board wants to confer on some, first the public, first the public should have an opportunity to hear.
Anybody in the public who wants to make a statement, uh, this is where you get to say whatever you want.
Identify yourself.
Just please identify yourself again with your address.
I'm Dr. Brady. Uh, the only statement I have, I guess, is, uh, it seems to me as if asphalt is covering everything and something that would be less impervious. For example, um, I guess they're called pavers or what have you, might also add to the ability to mitigate some of that drainage. And it's one of the things that I have thought about. Other people in the town have done that. And I think it has an environmentally positive impact on property because they look good, they can be replaced, and it also allows water to drain to grow.
Dr. Brady, you had indicated before that you opposed, I just wanted.
I was opposed to the way it was. I was opposed to them paving it over because they had paved over a great deal of their backyard. I wasn't too sure about the shed, that's still a little bit. I think the idea of the drain is, is okay if it's effective. And again, that's why I think it needs to be done professionally, not just, you know, I dig it in the backyard. And I think that if, if, if there was the ability to do anything, because now that the asphalt has been taken away, I think you could put almost anything there. And pavers would certainly mitigate some of the problems that, uh, my neighbors expressed, that's all.
I just wanted you to have the opportunity to fully, you, you were discussing it in your previous appearance. I want to make sure.
So my opposition was primarily the curvious surface and its effect on the neighbors, that was it.
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from members of the United Public Police? Hearing none. We close the public portion and the portion delivered.
Yep, the portion of the public portion. So move, take it. On favor? All right.
Well, I, I have a question. What, has, has the work that's, or does the work that has been previously, previously done without a permit, does that have to be inspected?
Well, everything will have to be inspected after it's finished.
Okay.
I mean, does this, in other words, does, with this application, if the board were to approve it, would it be curative of any previous, like, illegal development?
No, just, I mean, the work is done, it's not gonna be inspected.
Right.
So when we're inspecting any new work, if we approve it, will that previous work be done? And if there's a problem with it, will that be noted and reported to the homeowners?
I would say yes. I'd say that everything would be inspected.
Okay, yes.
I mean, I'm, I, you know, that, that would be my advice to any city staff who, uh, any municipal staff who was doing that. Is that, you know, you're submitting to, you're submitting all the work to our jurisdiction. So if there's a problem with the previous work, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna notify you. I expect it to be cured.
Then, then my comment is, I, I'm intrigued by the idea of an alternative service. And maybe some others, some others have some thoughts on that too.
Yeah, so I, I mean, like, is it true that pavers can, um, allow more penetration of water as opposed to, uh, the slab?
I think in theory, the question's what's underneath it. But I want to hear from the neighbors, the problem is with the slab being poured right now. The driveway is pitched. So the runoff from the driveway, unless, this is for me looking at the street, is primary now that the jointed properties into the street. The problem the adjoining properties are having is that the slab is in port. So I, I don't think the pavers are gonna help the runoff to the neighbors. It's gonna have to be the drains to pick up the roof, those, those slabs are there. Right now, it's gravel, so the neighbor's saying, we're getting more water and the driveway's not even poured. So obviously, the water's coming from, in my opinion, from the slabs. So to, to abate that, I think there's no choice but to put piping in. And the slabs are gonna stay, we're piping in to pick it up so that that water goes to the street. Whether the pavers are gonna help the driveway, yeah, I think it would be less runoff, but the driveway's going, it appears, wall to the street. So whether you reduce that runoff, yeah, it's good, but I don't think that's gonna help the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I mean, pavers are much more expensive than.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, if it's, if it's an absolute necessity, then maybe, you know, it could be a condition, you know, but if it doesn't help, that's an expensive condition.
It's an expensive condition.
And we can get the runoff from the driveway to the street, then there'd be no impact, so.
Well, you're also talking about a drain that, that goes all the way down the side of the driveway.
Right, so even the driveway has some runoff, we just pick it up in the trench drain, the street. I think the pipe is gonna make a huge difference as, as long as we can get the grade as part up. I don't know that, that the elevation is, there's not elevation on the back of the house. He has the PVC fence and you just can't see it.
And we're tying the storm drain, so actually, we're taking his roof away from what they're experiencing.
In theory, yeah, I would like to see the sump drain, we can tie in roof leaders on the south side. He has a drain in there for some, there's no reason why we can't tie those roof leaders in. Uh, and if you do it that way, then you pick up the whole, the whole roof. And then with the yard drains, you pick up any runoff from the pads. So in theory, there should be a lot less runoff from the neighbor's properties because he's piping everything to the street, assuming we can get the grades to work. And I would suggest to the board that we not, we don't know the grades until we get out there. Should the grades not work, that's the first thing that should be addressed. And he has to come back to the board to find a different solution or put a French drain in something because, uh, it appears that he's adversely impacting the adjoining properties. So in my opinion, that needs to be addressed, you know, but before anything, I mean, get that addressed, show the grade, get the piping done, and then the neighbors can see immediately that it works. And I think, my opinion, it should be done before the driveway is done, just to show good faith and to resolve this and to address the grades and make sure we know it works.
Because if it doesn't.
Right, if it doesn't work, come back to the board because, that's my opinion, but, um, and then the street trees, how the board feels about them. Uh, if you want the street trees, you can acquire them. Uh, if you want the street trees, acquire them, you're gonna have to deal with a canopy, and just, I don't, you know, with the residential, um, other applications, sometimes we, the board requires them, sometimes it says the canopy's too low, it's gonna be a hatchet job, so why put the tree down?
Any other board comments?
I think that's what-
Yeah, I just, I agree with Mike, as long as we can take care of the, uh, before-
Forged, like, or-
Yeah.
Our conditions? Do you have a list of any other questions?
The only condition I, well, the condition I have is that the stormwater management will be, uh, will be resolved to the satisfaction of the board's planner and engineer, which kind of brings in the issue that you discussed, the drainage has to be dealt with initially, and before any install, any other installation of concrete or anything else takes place. You understand that, right? So, you know, you don't want to jump the gun, as you pointed out, and, you know, you gotta wait, and you'll get this done, and Mr. Cole will, you know, upon Mr. Cole's satisfaction, and he signs off on it, and that's a formal thing, then you can move forward. That would be my, that would be our condition of approval, so, you know, briefly, just says, all stormwater management will be installed to the satisfaction of the board's planner and engineer, prior to any further construction.
And I know more comments, the sidewalk is a factor to disturb or destruction, you replace some. And then whatever the board wants to do with the trees, or lack thereof.
Also our standard conditions of approval, that, you know, you'll comply with any other regulatory issues that you need to. You'll pay all estros, you keep them all paid up, uh, pay taxes, et cetera. I have a number of standard conditions, counsel, I'm sure you're familiar with, you know, any-
Any other stuff about the street trees, wait a minute?
I like the concern.
Or can there, can there be a donation? Don't we have a tree bank or something?
Yeah, we do.
Why don't we do that?
We can, after the board's desire, uh, on other applications, it's been six fifty for every tree that goes to the tree commission to plant trees within the borough. It's a tricky location to do a wire, so if you don't do the right tree, you end up, we all know it. So, it's up to the-
I have over, I have wires and that, and it's a fruit tree, and so-
Yeah, you can, there are low canopy trees, you can do it.
And it, it might be cheaper than the donation?
Yes, it may be. Like a Japanese tree lilac, there's some low hanging trees that can be installed, absolutely.
Well, given all the smaller issues, um, you want to be careful with whatever you plant, because they become projectiles after a certain point.
Or the board could give them the option, either to financial contribution or plant the trees, as, as the applicant desires, if the board wants to get that option.
One thing I'm concerned about is the board's attorney, and I don't usually step in on this, but, um, we're structuring this in such a way that you will be working very closely with Mr. Cole, uh, in terms of issues like stormwater management equipment, proper installation, proper operation, things like that. That has got to be right. If it's not right, you're not gonna be able to put anything else in there. And, um, so, and, uh, Mr. Cole is very thorough, as he should be, and, uh, you know, if there's any issues, and if it's necessary that you need to make changes in connection with the approval, you will have to come back to us. All right.
There's the assumption that one piping side will pick up a lot more, obviously, personally caps, if it needs a second pipe, the trench is open. It's PVC, right, I mean, when it's open, now's the time. And if you have an opportunity, not to take it back to prior, but make it better, make it an improvement.
Make it better than it was.
Make it better than it was, not just, if we're doing all this effort, that's, why not improve it so the neighbors actually get a lot less runoff, to improve the situation for everyone? That's, we're doing this, that's, to me, that's to give best of us, to give it back so that they're actually drier properties.
Well, that's legally enforceable, too, because the board is making a decision in, in keeping with public safety and welfare. That's true.
So, like, the condition, they can't find a tree that's suitable for that space, that, very likely to lead to the, the sun.
So, the option is to either install one tree or make the-
I mean, I don't know anybody, I, that's just me.
Yeah.
I don't know anybody else.
Can I ask a question? Can I put a tree on the other side of the sidewalk, like, the property side, the left side of the sidewalk?
I mean, that's how it was on my house. I'm on this side.
Why, like, anything to stop them from?
I, I'm okay with either way.
Okay.
Uh, historically, they go between the sidewalk and curb for the look, but-
I'm just saying, the wires, I'm trying.
Given the circumstance, I don't see a reason why it could not be on your side.
Yeah, that's how it is on, that's what they did on our street. When they, when they, when they put the sidewalk in, they, there's only this much space to the road, so they, everybody had an option to put a tree on our front lawn. So, that's why I'm saying, it says, even if it was thirty feet, we could-
We all said, obviously, you could put a bigger tree, a more, a tree, a more, higher, from a nice canopy, to get away from the wires.
Yeah.
Which would address another problem.
Yeah, we want to make them put it in underneath wires, that doesn't make any-
Right, if he wants that.
Do we, do we talk about the canopy, uh, that, with the metal roof?
No.
If their leader's gonna be attached to that? Cause a lot of these I could show, based on the failure of that.
Yeah, well, I thought that we just pick up the yard drains, I'm, I'm sure, I don't know this, but usually, the four pad is two percent slope away from the house. So, if you look at the pads that are poured, they probably run to the east. So, instead of trying to pick up that roof, we just put yard drains in, pick up the runoff coming up. So, wherever he puts that, doesn't matter, as long as it's on pad, it's gonna run off to the east, and we'll pick it up with the yard drains.
Oh, with the yard drain.
Therefore, he's not tied into all the moves, if the pipes doesn't work and all that, we just pick them up in the yard, and all that runoff comes around.
So, the drain worked, that'll be done first.
Yeah, the drain, we have to look at the grades, is, is one of the, as the resident said, we, do we know that the grade is high enough that we can get the gravity of the drain? We need to figure that out from the first thing. And if it doesn't work, and we can't grab it, drain it, then we're gonna have to come up with a solution, and come back to the board with another solution before doing anything, because this stormwater runoff has got to be addressed, in my opinion.
No, I, I think that's a fair statement, you're being, we're worried with the applicants, that, you know, this is not a, uh, I mean, this is, this is, this could be very complex, and, uh-
Or it could be easy.
Or it could be, or it could be very easy, yeah. That's either, but, uh, it will, it will involve a certain amount of coordination that will be expected.
What, anything else?
I'll make the, the application.
I'll move it. Before, uh, to, uh, to approve.
Another second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Conditions set forth in the record, our standard conditions of approval.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
His confidence?
Yes.
Mr. Blimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Augustus?
Yes.
Mr. Yen?
Yes.
Greg Riddick?
Thank you very much.
I'll coordinate the preparation or resolution of your office.
Good.
Thank you. I'm not sure, 140 miles a car.
Yeah, we got, there you go.
You have the executive session, right?
Uh, I think I would say, we're gonna be busy for the next month, a bunch of applications coming. Uh, it's gonna be a busy winter, busy fall. Is that, anything interesting? As the board always sees, we're gonna have some, uh,
It's always interesting.
D varies, and of course, the, the single families.
Something new wants to land.
I haven't heard anything.
Not on either, and, uh, Mr. Pushing has been made aware of these, or, I mean, what it means, so I presume, you know, the court may very well carry it, because it was, uh, the last, uh, topic for, uh, case management conference, we're right in the middle of the office. It's not an easy time, it could got, so, I presume they'll, they'll be doing something, so, so, so.
Motion to adjourn? Thanks? My favor? Sir.
Just wanted to check, uh, we've put the 10 code even? This one?
Good, I don't hear, because relatively, we're telling you, I got it. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can I assist you with a little bit, as well?
I've seen it, I guess I got it. I was just talking to Stu about that, and, uh, make sure we have a hard copy of the gentleman.
Have you been looking at anything when you do something?
You didn't, you didn't tell me you're a graphic artist, too.
I'm not, right. I'm graphic. And graphic is one thing, and artist is the other, but usually, that starts with-
They don't go together?
It starts with color. But he wanted me to ask questions, so I just, so I'll be taking more questions.
Man, I was using your, your, uh, picture to figure out what the heck's going on.
I was actually sober, I, um, as I always, as I said to Caroline, when I have, when I have health tonight, I have this, I said, next thing I have is birds.
Yep.
Yep. Money I get from the bird, and right back to the bird, so, how's everything?
Great.
Busy?
I said, I'm waiting for my movie's live, and, yeah, it's gonna come out any day.